Hey Jim, were you able to get those materials? Elaine, I don't suppose you're able to unmute, Jim?
Let me give it a shot. Thank you, Mike. Jim did call and let me know that he received the materials that you sent him though, so I do have that confirmation.
Okay, and just so everybody knows, I have John Sweet in the room with me here. He was driving from Eugene up to Portland. And so he's dropped by to see, well, take in as much of the meeting as he can before he has to leave.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, hi John, how are you?
Good morning.
Jim, it looks like you're unmuted. Do you want to try speaking?
Get rid of me.
It looks like I'm okay now.
Look.
Hey, John.
I can't believe those two ladies from AOC are there. They were all having a pretty good time last night when I left the area.
John, you'd be adding us.
Hi, Cal.
Hey, John. Good to see you.
Thank you, you too.
So, so John, we're gonna miss you, but you know, I, my favorite line is how can we miss you if you won't go away?
That might be, that might be your problem. No, I'm still very interested in things forestry, so.
Great, great.
I was gonna say, it looks like I have a new boss.
You'd probably be nicer than your current boss next to Sam.
Elaine, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you, Heath.
Good morning, Elaine. Can you hear me?
Good morning, Bob. I can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, it is 9:00 AM. Jim, are you still with us?
I am, I am. Are we ready to go?
We are good.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November 22nd, 2024 special meeting for the Board of Forestry. For the record, I'm Jim Kelly, Chair of the State Board of Forestry. And just want to note that my computer chose to blow up this morning at 6:00 AM. And so I am on my cellphone, and if I have trouble with the connection, hopefully won't, but if I do, Brendan McCombe will take over running this, this meeting. Today's meeting is a virtual meeting, live streaming on YouTube. To make sure our viewers online can follow along, I'll offer some best practices. Please remain on mute unless you are speaking. When speaking, state your name for the meeting record. And should you need to step away, please mute and disable your video. If anyone experiences technical issues during the meeting, use the chat function on Zoom or speak up, and our ODF posts will do their best to find a solution. I will now perform a roll call. Liz Agkawa.
Hello, Chair. I'm present.
Great. Heath Curtis.
Present.
Ben Dormling.
Present by video.
All right, Joe Justice.
I am present.
Brenda McCone.
Present by video.
Bob Van Dyk.
Present by video from Soggy Forest Grove.
All right, and myself, Jim Kelly. We are dealing today with the Forest Management Plan Scenario Modeling. I never know whether it's scenario or scenario, but either way. In my understanding is that we have representative of the trust land counties who is going to present and testify. And I thought we would start with that. Brandon, are you with us?
I've got a point of order, Chair.
Sure.
Are we gonna, the agenda lists time for board member comments, or will those come later? Are we just accommodating the FTLAC members and that'll be a later item? Or are we removing that agenda item?
That's okay. We, we're not removing it because we don't do board member comments, or chair comments, or state forester comments on these special meetings. And, you know, we usually typically, I know you haven't probably been through one of these, we typically just hold it to the subject now. If you've got some things you want to bring up, I would recommend we do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I just another point of order, Chair, that the, the agenda does list state forester and board member comments as the first item at 9:00 AM. And, you know, the, as you know, by Robert's rules, we're required to follow the agenda unless there's a two-thirds vote to change it or unanimous consent. I'm happy to have the FTLAC go first, as long as there is time reserved later for board member general comments.
Okay, I'm looking at the annotated agenda. I'm sorry about that. The annotated agenda does not have that, and Cal and I had both spoken this morning, and both of us had said that neither of us would have any public comments at the beginning of the meeting. Let's, let's do it at the end, if that's okay, then.
Certainly, that's fine. Yeah, thank you.
We'll, we'll create that opportunity. All right. Go ahead, Brandon, if you're there.
There we go. Good morning, Chair Kelly. Can you, you see us? We're here.
Yeah, you're not Brandon, though. Yeah.
Well, no, we are not Brandon. Brandon is with us. He's running our technology to keep us on track. We are coming to you from the AOC Annual Conference, so good morning. We appreciate the opportunity just to make a few remarks as you go into your meeting today. So I'll read some written remarks, but we appreciate the time this morning. So Chair Kelly, members of the Board of Forestry, State Forester Mukamoto and staff. My name is Erin Scar, Tillamook County Commissioner. And as of yesterday, I am the newly elected Chair for the Forest Trust Land Counties. Joining me today is Commissioner Margaret McGruder, Columbia County Commissioner, and as of yesterday officially elected as the Vice Chair for the Trust Land Counties. We're pleased to be joining you in the, in the desire to advise the Board of Forestry and, Brandon's phone's ringing, and the State Forester on matters which affect the management of the state forest lands. So first, I'd like to take this opportunity to let the Board know who they will be seeing on FTLAC in the coming year. As I mentioned a moment ago, Commissioner McGruder and I are serving as Chair and Vice Chair. District One is Commissioner Olson of Tillamook County. District Two is Commissioner Bangs of Platte County. District Three is Commissioner Willie of Washington County, representing Clackamas, Columbia, and Washington. District Four is Commissioner Tucker of Lynn County, representing the counties of Benton, Lincoln, Lynn, Marion, and Polk. And District Five is Commissioner Loveall from Lane County, representing Coos, Douglas, Josephine, Clamath, and Lane. The counties look forward to continued partnership with you as we move forward with the FMP discussions, and the counties stand ready and are willing to join the Board at future meetings as we continue to work toward a shared vision and direction for the state forests. Your meeting today is specifically tailored to be one regarding the current development of the next Forest Management Plan. We had an FTLAC meeting last week where the department provided us with a similar presentation to the one you are about to receive, and I want to express on behalf of all the trust land counties our appreciation in seeing the department's plan on modeling the three scenarios that we requested. As a reminder to the Board, the position of the trust land counties is that our belief is the state forests can meet the multiple objectives of greatest permanent value as described in both ORS 530-050 as well as OAR 629-035-0020. State forests provide significant habitat for multiple threatened and endangered species, as well as species with healthier populations. This habitat will grow in quantity and quality under the Habitat Conservation Plan. The state forests are an important recreational resource for Oregonians. ODF has put increased attention on recreation in recent years through its Recreation, Education, and Interpretation Strategic Plan. We hope this plan will provide the public with a better understanding of Oregon's forests and the role played by state forests. We also hope this plan will continue to provide recreation opportunities that are safe for forest users and that protect forest resources. Finally, we believe that forests can provide natural resources that can be fruitful to society, whether they are non-timber or timber resources. The Board receives many comments about timber management. We see timber management as one of the many aspects of greatest permanent value, as stated in Oregon law. More importantly, we see timber management from state forests providing sustainable resources that can support rural economies and provide the raw materials for our society. Timber from state forests contributes to home construction, remodel, and repair. Timber from Oregon will be needed to meet Governor Kotex's home construction goals and to fill housing deficits in Oregon and across the West Coast. We, we proposed, when the department ran the various scenarios, to first show them with a fully implemented HCP in their models. The HCP is the Significant Commitment to Threaten and Endangered Species Conservation. The Board voted to adopt the HCP as drafted and send it to federal services for consideration, and we assume this will come to fruition. We ask to see that factored into the model and appreciate that it is. We also discussed the restoration of lands affected by the 2020 Labor Day fires. ODF just reported on Tuesday their completion of the Saniam State Forest Restoration Efforts with the planted seedlings of 2.3 million. This is crucial to the state forest system, and we greatly appreciate this effort by the department. We also asked that the models run following all regulations require under the Forest Practices Act that fall outside of the stewardship agreements found in the HCP. We also asked that models be run to factor in the current measures ODF is implementing to mitigate the impact of climate change in the state forest system. And finally, we asked that the revenue production for counties, as well as ODF, be consistent with the levels required to support the needs that we both have. Because of this, we asked the Board to direct ODF to model an even flow of 185 million board feet per year for the next 30 years, the period where restoration can take place within the HCAs. Modeling has consistently been landing on levels of approximately 185 million board feet per year. The work in conversations counties have been having with the governor's office have been using 185 million board feet, and seeing that was a guiding level for minimum harvests. We asked that this level be run. In an effort to better understand the potential of trade-offs, we also asked the Board to direct ODF to model even flow harvest of 195 million board feet and 205 million board feet for the next 30 years, followed by non-declining yields. We believe this range is consistent with the Board's interest in using the Forest Management Plan to mitigate the costs to the counties identified in ODS analysis of the HCP. Again, we're here today to express our thanks to the staff, to the department, and this Board for assurance that we are keeping these three requests in the discussion and for directing ODF to model our requests to see the outcomes. It is greatly appreciated, and as newly elected Chair and Vice Chair, we wanted to come and say thank you for keeping our voices at the table and for keeping our models in the run so that we can have that trade-offs conversation together when that work is complete. So Vice Chair McGruder and I are happy to answer any questions if the Board has any, but the trust land counties stand ready to continue to roll up our sleeves and work with the Board and the department on all issues that face our state forests. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we really appreciate that you're sharing the perspective and being here, and congratulations to both of you on your new positions. Board members, any questions?
I have a comment, Chair Kelly, not a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you for being here today, and congratulations on your leadership positions. I'm thankful to both of you for doing it and for your constructive approach. I just want to flag, I, I shared a document, I think you may have got it. I think, and I think it's going to be a long-term thing to do, but I, I think the department needs to really take on recreation and the future of recreation, which is expensive and expansive and increasing on the state forest. So just want to flag that for you. This modeling, of course, doesn't really talk about that, except to the extent the revenues, of course, are important to provide for, for recreational amenities and manage the public. But my perception from Forest Grove is that, and I imagine you see it in Tillamook County as well on Highway Six, that's really, there's increased use from the metro area of the state forest. So, you know, finding a way to maybe get everybody somehow to pay some more for that, to help that stay afloat is something to think about. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to put a pin in that, in that recreation conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions or comments before we go on to the main presentation?
Just very quickly, Commissioners, to your presentation, thanks for being here. Congratulations, you both. Did I understand correctly from your testimony there that you support ODF modeling the three numbered alternatives, the like 185, 195, and 205, that you didn't have any specific changes you wanted there that that was, that looked good for you?
Thank you for the question. That looked good for us. We were pleased with the presentation and felt that the models that staff had put forward will meet what we have asked for. So our, our hope is that as the Board has your discussion today, which we won't be able to stick with, we've got to go back to our conference, but that those models remain. So thank you for the question, Heath. Yes.
Other questions? Not hearing any. I think we will move to our main presentation and turn this over to Mike Wilson.
All right. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chair Kelly. Members of the Board, State Forester Mukamoto. For the record, my name is Mike Wilson, and I serve as the State Forest Division Chief. Joined here today for this presentation by Todd Heron, our Information Unit Manager, and Tyson Weprik, our Adapted Management Specialist. And I'm just gonna move my screen around a little bit so I can still see everyone. And, great, so we are here to present the modeling scenario, so let's jump right in. So our agenda today for this presentation is to, first of all, we'll review the purpose of why we're here. We'll go over the modeling scenarios. We'll discuss the kinds of modeling outcomes that we will be able to provide. That will be next spring. And then we'll have some discussion and decision and go over the next steps in the process. So the purpose of why we're here is, so we have an HCP. While we're getting an HCP, all of this modeling, all of this effort is done within the context of that HCP. And what we want to do is then, we have a certain range of management that we can do outside of the conservation actions and other requirements of the HCP. So we want to explore the range of those management approaches. We want to evaluate trade-offs come spring from the modeling outputs. We want to evaluate the trade-offs among those key modeled outcomes. And basically, we want to facilitate Board and stakeholder discussion as we go through the process over the better part of the next year on outcomes and priorities for the management of the state forests. So just to be, you know, clear, we are not modeling a specific implementation scenario. The outcomes, the discussion, and eventually the setting of the performance measures by the Board will, will guide us in how we design an implementation plan. But we are not selecting any specific implementation scenario. That's still something that we do under Cal's authority in developing those, those IPs. All right, I just wanted to throw up a quick timeline here of where we're at, because everybody always kind of wonders. And so on the top timeline here is, is what we're dealing with today. So we've talked about performance measures, and we're can still, I think everybody was fine with the large categories of performance measures. We are still going to be working through the individual metrics, many of which will come from the modeling, but some of which don't, and some of which actually will have to be dealt with in the future as we develop a monitoring plan around those. But we are in the process now of adopting and then running the various scenarios for the FMP. Once that's done, then we'll have the trade-offs discussion, and hopefully sometime in summer of next year, the FMP will be adopted, number one. And number two, performance measure targets would be set to help guide implementation. So if we drop down to the bottom line, sorry, it's a little out of order, but for that new IP, then we would be doing the scoping and developing of the new IP process. And as, that would be informed by the performance measure targets that are adopted as we go into the analysis and drafts for that IP. And then we would have in, in late 2026, we would adopt, Cal would approve the new implementation plan going forward so that we could be effective with an AOP, new FMP implementation plan, and annual operations plan, all coming to beginning in fiscal year 2028, or July 1, 2027. In the meantime, we are having to extend the current IP revision that we've been functioning under for a couple of years. We had hoped, as you know, to have, and so it'll take permits already in hand. That process is taking longer than we thought it would. So we are extending those to cover us for our fiscal year 2026 and 2027 operating plans. So that work is ongoing, and IP should be up for approval in early 2025. So I think with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Todd.
Can I, I have a quick question, Mike, and I think I didn't know if I heard it right or whatever. But as far as the scenarios go for modeling, you mentioned state forester. Is there something specific, Cal, in your role that you will have with the rollout of these, the modeling scenarios? I thought I picked up something like Cal will do X.
Oh, you mean as far as the scenarios add to the scenarios?
Yes, was there an approval process there through you, or?
Yeah, I'll be approving the, the intermediate, the implementation plans. But they'll be based on your selection in the FMP as far as scenarios. Am I correct, Michael? That's the way I interpret it. Yeah.
Right. In, in terms of the process that we're currently going through with the scenarios, that's really, you know, we're framing those up based on what we heard from you and FTLAC. And so there's no real role of approval role or anything there, other than, you know, formally adopting, say, today that yes, these are the scenarios that you want us to run. And so it really won't be until we get into that IP design further down the road, and that's where state forester approval comes in.
Yeah, yeah. So you have the input with FTLAC into these scenarios that we're modeling for the FMP. One of those will be selected.
All right, Cal. Thank you. I just thought I heard something different.
Okay. You got a bunch of hands up there, so.
This is, this is Jim. I just want to remind everyone, since we're online, it's especially important as we pose questions or make comments that everybody identifies themselves each time they speak.
Yeah, that was Liz Akkawa asking that question. Thank you for the reminder.
And that was Cal Mukamoto, State Forester, answering.
Looks like we have a couple of other hands.
Yeah, I'll, teeth, I think I was up first, but, so I'm hearing two different things, and I have a question. Could you go back a slide, Mike? So between the time that we have our discussion regarding the performance measures and the time that you embark on developing the IP, at what point does the Board have a role in input into the final modeling that would go into the IP? Because I just heard you say that Cal makes the decision for the IP, correct? But where, where does the Board come into play prior to that?
I think that's, again, Mike Wilson, State Forest Division Chief. I, I think that is a good, that is a live conversation. I think it kind of depends on how we land with the modeling scenarios. You know, it's not outside the realm of possibility that one of these scenarios just looks great and does everything that everybody wants, and it's pretty clear the direction we're going. However, there's probably, you know, some space that there could be more, more work in refining that. I think once we understand, have the trade-offs discussion and understand where people, where where people, where the board as a whole is, is positioned and where they want to go, we probably will have to do further analysis. We'll definitely have to do further analysis and modeling to develop the IP. And so there could be, you know, a couple of, you know, maybe two or three different, I'll say nuances to what we do with the IP that would be modeled out. And we would, of course, be more than happy to share that and have those discussions with the board as well. Although just making that clear distinction about where the approval authorities lie at the end of the day.
But, but doesn't the board have to approve the FMP?
Yes, the board has to approve the FMP.
Right. So if the board has to approve the FMP, then we better be real sure that we agree with the modeling approach that you take. So I would just lobby for having a, a, an item put in there somewhere between our discussion regarding performance measures and your final effort at developing an IP. Thank you.
So for me, the, you know, I don't recall seeing this slide before, but the, the, the challenge I have here, and we don't need to address it here, I guess, but I, I just wanted to say like, the current IP is premised on you not having an incidental take permit. And because you don't want to be harvesting these areas that you are setting aside for conservation because you are anticipating that you will and that you've made certain commitments to the feds, you are presently observing the prescriptions of the HCP simultaneously with avoiding any incidental take. And once you have an incidental take permit in hand, the bargain, of course, is that you make these large conservation commitments in the terms of your conservation measures. And that authorizes you to commit incidental take. That is to say that you would have the, some management flexibility. It's not acceptable to me that you would have an HCP in place. Like the last I heard, you were targeting that in 2026. And that you would be managing under your old IP for two more years. That doesn't recognize the trade-off of the conservation measures for your incidental take permit. The timeline for moving to management under the HCP and your authorities there under, to me, needs to be much more rapid than that. I had anticipated you would have an IP ready to go as soon as you received your ITP. It sounds like that's not presently the plan, but oh my Lord, two more years. That's a very conservative management where you are both simultaneously not observing a take avoidance policy and implementing the conservation measures under the HCP is a very expensive strategy. And I don't, I don't understand that.
So there are certain components of this. When we get incidental take permits in hand, we instantly get more flexibility operationally, right? We're relieved of some of those survey and manage type constraints that we have. And so it does open up options, but we do need to have an IP in place where we can plan an AOP as well. And it is a, you know, we, we unfortunately, we're not a speedboat. And there are, there's things that we can do quickly and there's things that take a little more time. And the planning process does take a little bit more time. So for our planning staff to be able to identify candidates, and until we have ITPs, we have to keep surveying and have to be ready for the eventuality that if we don't get them, we're still able to harvest. But however, again, once we get ITPs, there is the option for some additional flexibility in terms of where we operate, just because we don't have the survey and manage constraints of take avoidance on us at that point.
Is it possible that the IP extension that we implement could recognize? I mean, you've got all the structure-based management stuff in there that largely goes away with the new HCP. Like you need the flexibility to not have to observe all of those requirements as soon as you get your ITP.
Well, we're already taking steps with this IP revision to, you know, part of the thing that we're dealing with, with these overlapping policy constraints that we've talked about in the past, is we have desired future condition that doesn't align with HCAs. And we are taking measures to align those better in this current IP revision.
I see.
So that will help alleviate those types of, of constraints as well as we move forward.
Well, I hope, in agreement with Brenda, honestly, I, I do hope that we can have a check-in and we can move forward rapidly with the new implementation plan following the ITP.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I think we can, I'll turn it over to Todd.
Morning, Chair Kelly, State Forester Mukamoto, members of the board. My name is Todd Heron. I'm the forest, or the Information Unit Manager for State Forest. And I'm actually gonna hand it over to Tyson Webrick for the first few slides.
Morning. Thanks, Todd. Good morning, Chair Kelly, State Forester Mukamoto, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tyson Webrick, the Adaptive Management Specialist in State Forest. I'm gonna do a quick model review. I think you've seen this process before. But this is what we'll be talking about today. These are the basic steps in the modeling process. Our forest activity model attempts to show how forest management can be optimized over time across the landscape and among resource goals. It starts with our input data, which includes the current forest inventory, how the forest grows over time in response to management treatments, and constraints on management such as a landscape design, rules, and regulations. The second bullet is where we set goals for the model to achieve. And this is what we are primarily discussing with the scenarios that we're, where we're exploring management approaches. After we give the scenarios different goals, we move to the third bullet where the model attempts to find the best harvest scheduling and silvicultural treatments that meet those goals over time. And from each modeled scenario, we'll have a set of outcomes to present to you all to help with future discussions about the trade-offs between the management approaches. And I'll note that the model process and data are very similar to what we used last year, but the scenarios will be different and allow a wider breadth of approaches. Next slide, please. So I want to review the two discussions that we've had at board meetings this year with representatives from FTLAC. In June, we talked about how we would measure the outcomes of the draft FMP through performance measures. And in our December, September discussion summarized on this slide, we talked about management scenarios and how board members and FTLAC think about the many benefits that derive from state forests. From our discussion, some common points of agreement included pursuing options with an HCP in place and continuing an active management approach for forest restoration, climate change adaptation, habitat for wildlife, recreation, and revenue generation. The scenarios mainly explore the key differences in timber harvest approaches outside of HCAs. And this may make the discussion today seem tilted towards timber. And this is because those management decisions have the largest impact on the landscape and determine the provisioning to many of the other resource goals we have. The scenarios we are proposing to model primarily, primarily differ in timber harvest volume targets, the flow, which is the amount of harvest through time, and the rotation ages. And for all scenarios, we assume that the HCP is in effect for the duration of the modeling with management and habitat conservation areas consistent in all scenarios. Other constraints are the same throughout the scenarios like Forest Practices Act. And we assume that log prices and management costs, which are adjusted for inflation in the model, we assume that they're the same across all scenarios. Next slide, please. So this table is a summary of what we are proposing to model, and Todd will go into more detail for each scenario on the next few slides. We think the most informative model runs will be the ones highlighted in green. And prioritizing, prioritizing these will provide what we think is the most information over the full range of outcomes. The cells in the table that are not highlighted in green are up for the board's discussion, and we look forward to that today. In some cases, the utility of additional runs for a scenario may not be apparent until we start modeling and see which variables are limiting in a particular scenario. And Todd will talk more about that, in particular for scenario four. And I can give my quick run-through. I see there is a hand up, and I'm happy to stop.
Yeah, thank you, Tyson. I just wanted to know, wonder if you could clarify. This is Brendan McCombe for the record, what is meant by up to 150 or up to 120?
Okay. Yeah, I, I will do that. I'm gonna run through the scenarios from top to bottom, and I'll, I'll get to that up to. So this is back to Tyson. And so for scenario run, scenario one, we follow the proposal from the counties that Commissioner Scar shared today and back in September. These would have a 30-year harvest volume target on Board of Forestry lands. Common school lands would be modeled separately and would be additional to this target. Each of these three model runs would attempt a different annual target. And then after 30 years, the model would reevaluate the forest stock and set harvest to maximize volume at non-declining flow, which may or may not be less than the volume target in the first 30 years, depending on what the model determines is sustainable. And scenario two, we're looking for longer rotations in the ground outside of HCAs compared to what we currently average. Management would include thinning before the final harvest ages and may select stands from a variety of ages to harvest with a secondary goal of creating a more even age distribution outside of HCAs. And 150-year rotations was a suggestion in September as a bookend to test the boundaries of what the trade-offs might be. And for, we're saying up to because we're not sure. Based on the modeling, you might have the model select stands that are not right up at 150 years in those modeling periods where it's deciding which stands to harvest. So I think what we'd be doing, and Todd might get more into that, we would be, we would have different age classes that we're trying to even out our stands over time. And there might be some harvests at different age classes, and they wouldn't all occur at that maximum age set in the scenario. So that's why we're, we're hedging and saying up to 150 years of managed, in managed acres. An alternative run for this scenario would be a different maximum age class in those managed acres. For scenario three, this would be that we would tell the model to maximize volume over the time period of the entire model run. And in December, last December, we modeled a scenario that maximized volume with an even flow, which was a pretty tight constraint. And we can look back at that scenario and compare it to this, this new model run that loosens that allowance for periodic variation in volume. And scenario four attempts to maximize the net present value and affect discounting future revenues. In September, we, we talked about this model run as another bookend in which harvest variation over time is not limited. This scenario would test the boundary of what management would look like under an approach driven by net present value while being constrained by the HCP commitments and Forest Practices Act regulation. Yeah, I can stop now. I see another hand.
You, you can finish your thought, Tyson. I, if you, if you like.
Yeah. Do you think, do you think your question's better for Todd or for me?
Well, I had thought previously, and I thought that the FTLAC meeting and anticipated scenario three was a non-declining even flow that, you know, maximize volume, but I don't, I don't, guess I don't understand the difference between three and four. I mean, is it maximize volume over the permit term? I don't, I don't understand three now.
Yeah, so it would, three would be maximizing volume over the entire model run period. And I think, you know, currently our status quo is, is modeling with a non-declining even flow. And I think this one, it kind of, I think Todd can speak to this better because it does kind of end up at an even flow if you are harvesting near the culmination.
Yeah, that definitionally would be true, though. I don't know, again, these now have like unlimited periodic variation, and I don't know what we're trying to get at there, right? If, if you are, yeah, and we don't have a fully regulated forest. And so I don't, like, the timing of that flow matters. I, I had thought the objective with scenario three was to try to have a steady and predictable volume for the duration of the permit term. Not that I'm advocating for that outcome, but I thought analytically, that's what we were trying to accomplish with scenario three. So we could see that, how much you could produce if your objective was to not have periodic variation, or at least very little.
Yeah, I think, I think it may have changed because the, the data input is going to be pretty similar to last December's modeling. So I think we'll be able to go back to those December outputs and, and compare what a, what a non-declining even flow with, with little periodic variation would look like.
Yeah, still, I don't, like, I don't know why we changed scenario three. I don't, I don't get it. And maybe Todd, you've got thoughts.
Yeah, real quick. So scenario three was, was the, it was originally characterized as the, that even flow scenario, more or less status quo. There was some desire to, to see recognizing that the December run was already an even flow, even though it was a fairly strict even flow. There was a desire to see what was the, you know, maximum volume moving towards that culmination of mean annual increments without limiting the, the variation on periodic harvest. So run B in this scenario would be, would be maybe closer to what you're envisioning in terms of the, the bound, the, the even, even flow volume with that 10% variation limit. And so the, the objective of run A is, is simply to let the model explore the, you know, the, the harvest scenarios that would get you to that maximum culmination of mean annual increment, if you will, soon, the soonest.
You may have this, and I'm sorry, I see all the hands, that you may not be wording this right then. I mean, this could anticipate a strategy, maximum volume with unlimited periodic variation, where you produce all of your volume to get to your max in the last 10 years of your permanent term, right? And that doesn't sound to me like what you're anticipating here. What you're anticipating is even flow. Again, I thought that the reason we wanted this was so that you could see there's an argument that that's a better way to manage because it's more predictable for the agency and it's more predictable for the counties, and we just kind of have a vision. And the trade-off, of course, is with even flow that even flow can be driven down really hard because you've got gaps in growth volume over time. And in order to have even flow, you've got to artificially suppress your harvest volumes early on. And we were going to contrast that with one where you might accelerate harvest a little bit in like scenario one. And I, I still think that, not that I would advocate for that outcome, but that helps you understand the cost of a non-declining even flow strategy. And, and I, I thought that would be helpful to have. I'm surprised. I guess I still don't understand why we're deviating from that.
I think Joe's up next. Joe, just for record, I, so I would assume on maximize volume on your unlimited periodic variation, that will, in effect, how you do that would be to delay harvest early, right? I mean, to increase, increase volume, grow trees longer, closer to culmination. Just like what Heath said, it, it's an interesting bookend. It would be an interesting, it, it, you know, run to evaluate trade-offs. However, I think you almost have to run it with some sort of periodic variation limit, whether that be non-decline even flow or a 10%. To, to Heath's point, I mean, I've been saying over and over again, truly trying to understand what that, what the, the net cost is, is not of non-decline even flow to allow that model more, more latitude. Um, uh in how it selects and when it selects to bring volume forward, so. I I think it's an interesting, scenario three A would be an interesting um uh. Run to make, I have some expectations of what the model would do. I'd be surprised if it didn't hold volume. Uh, because we don't have a reg, you know, we have, you know, some young, you know, it's gonna hold volume closer to that. Uh mean annual increment or culmination and then like he said, it's gonna, it's gonna log all at one time, I would assume. So it may not even be a, is it so, I guess you could argue that it's so. Un, you know, it's not, it's it's not a scenario we're ever gonna do that, why run that, I suppose. I just offer that thought. I also have some additional questions about the other scenarios, but I will, I will wait for some other board members weigh in.
I I think I'm next, uh I would rather see that even flow constraint. In there or add that as the even flows for following Heath and Joe. That seems like the one that frankly is is most. Similar to what's been happening in the past and maybe the place we end up, so I like. Uh, at least seeing what it would be like to stick with the status quo. Maybe the ten percent periodic variation limit gets us there to, you know, provide some discretion. Uh, for the, for the um agency. But um, you know, then I'd want that colored green. I'm less interested in the. Uh periodic, in the maximize the volume run A per se without that even flow constraint. Like um, like Joe, I've got some some questions about some of the other runs, but I'll also save those until you get through the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Hey, I just wanted to to butt in here, um. I cannot see uh the hands up, um and so can't manage that here on my phone, so. Um, Brenda, on in terms of who's up to speak next or with a question or comment, can you manage that, please?
Absolutely, Jim. Uh Ben's up next.
Thank you, Ben Donning for the record. Um, I feel like I need to weigh in here because this was my suggestion to Mike and his team. To change scenario three, um and for me. Scenario three, the 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 original draft of scenario three was pretty much exactly what we had done in December. And it felt redundant. If we were gonna have four model runs, let's do something new because we already have that one. Um, if we had the opportunity for to run four, let's do something we hadn't already done. Um, was such my one, my first thought, my second thought is. With even flow maximizing vol, it, what happens is we get with even flow, we get stands at age out. And they they come, they get off the map, so to speak. And this by by having unlimited variation, it allows us to get at those stands. Um, more easily. Um, and I don't think that I. Heath and Joe, you are both smarter at this than I am, but I, so I defer to you and your understanding of this. I think it would be very interesting to see what this is going to do. Um, ultimately, it's going to harvest at CMAI for the most part and. That will get lumped lumpy as the forest is lumpy. So I don't think that it can't by definition hold it all till the end because then. The trees will age past CMAI and start, you know, reducing growth. So I think basically this, the way I understand this model is it would be harvesting around eighty ish years old. Depending on the stand and the site across the forest. Um, which we're currently really limited in that we, because of our lumpy age classes and even flow. So this would sort of take the handcuffs off and see what volume we would actually get off of this forest was. The reason I was pushing for this.
And honestly, I'm not offended by that strategy, Ben. I I think it is an interesting question. I think. It, my my heuristic is it's not gonna look quite like what you think it's gonna look like, but it, I may be wrong. Um, I would only argue that I. I I don't know what's changed since December. I get the sense that our modeling approach is not exactly the same. And maybe it is, but for me, in terms of seeing a modeled package at the end. Again, one of the things I was trying to highlight was. If you are willing to accommodate some variability from even flow. You might be able to produce a way better outcome, at least for the first several decades and that. And I I would like to understand that and in order to do that, I have to have an even flow run against which to contrast it. And maybe that's the December run, but I I do wanna be able, I don't want somebody to argue later that's apples and oranges. I want an apples to apples comparison.
Perhaps it's useful for uh Mike to clarify Heath's question about whether last December's. Is apples to apples, because that is an important question and it's an assumption I was making, but maybe Mike, you can answer that.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, this is a good discussion and I, so where we landed in our thoughts on this as we, as we uh, you know, reflected on it was. That it would be uh, you know, granted, it was a stricter even flow than what we're talking about, but. December was pretty much the status quo result in terms of trying to achieve even flow. Yeah, okay, there could be some flexibility around that. And it was a more interesting question to say, how do we maximize the overall volume? Output, right, for it and see what that period to period variation looks like. And then having run B here as back saying, okay, so that seems to be a lot of variation. Right? Perhaps. And so then, how would, you know, would we constrain that and and what would that solution look like? But we just wanna make, you know, kind of like with a lot of these runs. We've really kind of pushed the envelope, right? It's like, let's make sure we're trying to get that longer rotation. Let's make sure we look at an uncollared run for net present value. Let's kind of do the same thing for maximizing volume as well. And then if we need to put uh a little bit more constraint on it. Uh, to understand better, we can, we can do that. But you you're correct, uh Ben, I mean, I really do feel like. The December modeling is close enough to business as usual and the status quo. Um, that it pretty well informs us there.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Um, Joe, I'm gonna just chime in for a second here before I pick, go to you. Uh Brendan McCombe for the record, um I just wanna, the the conversation seems like it's moving more toward. Uh, let's run these different scenarios and pick one, which is not the intent. Um, and I think away from the original intent. Which is to have as broad a set of bookends as possible that would inform a discussion around. Uh, setting goals for performance measures. That would then guide the final modeling effort. And so I just wanna, I just wanna do a a check in here that um. I would not get too concerned about whether something seems viable or not viable at this point. We want something that's going to represent the full range of of possible conditions. So with that, Joe, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Uh, yeah, Joe Justice for record, I agree, Brenda, completely agree. I I I wanna see, I, that is my understanding also is that we. This is a, this is an exercise by which to see and to evaluate. What is, what is potentially possible, right? And I I completely agree with that, Brenda. And and so that being said, I think running that scenario will be a very informative scenario to run from an information standpoint. Just to to Mike's point, to see the variation related to maximizing volume. I hope, and I guess I would offer that is whatever we do and if, and I guess this is a question for Mike. There there potentially is gonna be an iterative process here once we run these these scenarios. And where does that fit into this schedule, this iterative process? Cause I I I suspicion, I have some assumptions about what's gonna happen related to scenario three A in my mind, right? I may be wrong, I may be, I may be incorrect, but I have some assumptions, but based on those assumptions, I think. I'm assuming we may wanna do an iterative run following that, um following that one A like a, like or a three B. So um, I agree, Brenda.
Yes, and this is Mike again, I'll I'll just chime in on that, uh. That the where the iterate, where the iteration takes place in here is all within our modeling window. That we're looking at to try and deliver results by next spring. Um, you know, it's fairly. Uh, sorry, Todd, I'm gonna say that something's easy when I know it's not. It's fairly easy, right, for us to do these runs and say, oh, hmm, that looks like it would be really weird. And also then do a run with a limit with these very various periodic limits. Um, or perhaps a different, you know, uh uh oldest stand age uh sort of thing, rotation age, to be able to help. Give some context to what we bring back as well, but I just don't wanna. Uh, the more we thought about it, it's kinda like, you know, even in our own, because maximizing volume on even flow is our traditional thing. And it's kinda like, hey, let's not put our own blinders on for that as well, right? Let's take these blinders off, let's look at a broader set, broader range of bookends. And any iteration that we can do with the stuff that you see in the gray here. Um, that all takes, that's all intended to be part of the the package, if you will. Um, the the reason we are prioritizing the ones in green is simply time and staff uh constraints.
Yeah, Mike, thanks, uh Brendan McCombe for the record. Bob, I'll get to you in just a second. Uh, I just wanna point out. Uh, Mike, that you've heard from Joe, Heath, me, maybe others. That um some check in in your schedule uh to allow for a further discussion and perhaps further iteration. Uh, it would be highly desirable. Uh, Bob?
Yeah, well, first on the check in, I agree with that. I guess my idea is that there may be, depending what we learn here, a refinement. Where the board gets close to to what it thinks the got, you know, direction's gonna be. Uh, and that, you know, maybe that gets gets run informed by these bookends. Um, I just also wanna say like, if if the December modeling is close enough. Uh, that we aren't learning anything new. I wasn't aware of that. I thought that this new run might incorporate some new information. Or the model might be um. Uh, well, basically there'd be new information somehow included, the model might be slightly different, so I'm fine just relying on that December. A snapshot. The ten percent periodic variation might be interesting, though. That's a little different from, I think, what you did in uh in December, so. Uh, but, you know, I wouldn't uh stand very strongly for that. I guess time permitting, I'd say. If it's not too hard to run that, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Mike, I think it's back to you or Todd or Tyson.
Um, Tyson, did you have any more, Tyson?
Nope, it's.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. I see, just see, just see Heath's hand pop up. Sorry, Heath.
Yes, and I thank you, Brenda, just very quickly, the, I think what might also be helpful between here and there is. What's the nature of the guidance that the board is going to be giving you? Like, I still haven't really wrapped my head around. You know, I, the board doesn't set harvest volume numbers per se. I don't. I don't think we actually even have authority to do that. And so, you know, you talk about these performance measures, but I haven't. I haven't got it through my head, like, once we get all of this analysis in place and you've shown us the various model runs you've done and what it looks like. What is, you know, the sentence you're going, what's a kind of sentence you would want from us, right? It's, I don't, I don't know, like, is it, does, is the sentence maximize volume, for instance? Is uh the sentence hypothetically, I don't, I don't like, I I get the sense that we feel like we're gonna vote on something at the end. And it's not even clear to me what it is we're gonna vote on. And you don't need to answer that per se now, but before we get to that day. Uh, that may be helpful to me to understand in terms of structuring and understanding this modeling exercise.
Thank you, Heath. Mike, I think it's back to your team.
Yes, um, maybe we could uh just go to the next slide. We were gonna talk about a little bit more detail on the specific runs. Uh, again, mine, this is Todd Heron for the record. Um, all good discussion, appreciated. That was uh informative and I think you all articulated things better than I could here in the moment. Um, we wanted to take a moment to talk about individual, uh the individual scenarios that we were. Uh, expected to, that we plan to run and uh have an opportunity to dive into a little bit more detail on those uh in particular. So for scenario one, this, as Tyson noted, these were the uh, the scenarios that were brought forward by the the county. Uh, FTLAC members and their their uh, their request. So this is really about exploring, you know, um, that thirty year time period. What is, what is the uh, what does it look like to achieve a a steady? Even flow specifically on Board of Forestry lands for that thirty year timeframe. And um, and then evaluate the the trade off with, you know, allowing the model to to reset after that time period. Is there, is there a fall down in harvest? Do we need to uh reset um in that regard? And so for the first three thirty years, it would be a a fairly strict um. Even flow harvest for the, in particular on the Board of Forestry lands. And then um modeled as non declining flow beyond that. And so it it may, it may be a lower harvest level, um in particular for the more aggressive run. That's probably the uh, the assumption there. For a common school land, we would, we would model those uh. Not separately per se, it's it's within the same model, but they 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 would have a a goal of maximizing um harvest. In addition to the Board of Forestry harvest. Next slide. Okay, and then, so the the longer rotation scenario, uh this is about um achieving. Primarily that uh, that balanced age, age class distribution out to those later years. So what what does it look like to to manage for those, for older rotations? You know, how 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 do we uh get the forest on a trajectory so that we have balanced age classes up to? It in the case of the first run, up to a hundred and fifty years. So that would include, you know, the thinning prescriptions, the the management um. Um, necessary in order to schedule out the 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 harvesting and the activities to get to that uh more balanced age class.
Bob, excuse me, uh, we have a couple of questions popping in. Uh, Bob, Bob, go ahead.
Uh, are you done describing that, Todd? I want you to have time to describe it, so then I'll have a question about.
I think that's in a nutshell, we can entertain some questions, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, for the record, Bob Van Dyke. Uh, my question's about what's going to drive the decisions of when the the surplus amount for the different age classes is taken. And also what is driving the timing for achieving the hundred fifty year rotation? So, you know, I I guess I'm interested in part in what um other values like carbon or timber volume over time are gonna play. Or, you know, achieving certain habitat uh condition. So just interested in learning a little bit more about what what drives those decisions in the model. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'll try to describe that. So so the approach that we're uh proposing would um divide the. The age class distribution into essentially ten year bins, so each the uh ten year age classes. And so the the model's objective then would be to achieve, uh, you know, an even number of acres. Through time within each one of those uh age class bins and then um. And so the the timing associated with doing that, the the goal would be to essentially figure out how soon that's possible. Um, is it the seventy year permit term or does it take longer to get to that balanced age class distribution? And um, the, uh, so that the question about harvest and um. Uh sec- secondary objectives, the harvest would be a secondary objectives in so much that it doesn't detract from the. The the attainment of that balanced age class distribution. So we expect that there there are certain, whether they're spatial constraints or logistical constraints. It'll, you know, it, and because we have a unbalanced uh age class distribution now, it will take some time for the. For those um age classes to balance out and so let the model um inform us on on how best to. Or, you know, how how quickly we can get to that uh even age class distribution.
Follow up, if I may, just briefly, is uh carbon a secondary goal or is timber harvest the only secondary goal there?
Uh, as it's characterized, it's. Harvest would be the the secondary goal, the the intention, I guess the expectation is that those. Longer rotations would be a surrogate for for carbon and and uh habitat and other conditions.
Thank you.
Uh, Heath's up next.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, when you calculate, you had a, so I have two questions. You have a parenthetical on the prior slide that says includes volume from the HCAs. I presume when you calculate the volumes you produce under this modeling scenario, it will also be premised on the volumes in the HCAs. Is that correct?
That's correct, the, I'm not sure if it was noted earlier, all of these scenarios will have essentially the same HCA management objectives.
So I just wanna make sure, I I don't, I still don't understand how you're going to decide, and this is kind of to Bob's question. So I just want to make sure I, I don't, I still don't understand how you're going to decide, and this is kind of to Bob's question as well, how you're going to decide to get to, you know, there, there's actually two, you're actually not just doing 150 year target. You are also introducing a fully regulated forest target, right? That is to say, you're saying I want to get to 150 year rotation age on a fully regulated forest. And that's, that's kind of a little different, um, than what I had anticipated, but nevertheless, uh, you have very little, virtually no stands presently outside of the HCAs that are 150 years old. So am I correct to presume then, and again, understanding this is a bookmark and we've got a couple of bookmarks in here that will have some challenges. Am I correct to presume that that definitionally will require a large decrease in harvest to wait until such time as, and given some thinning in the interim, but to wait until such time as you have 150 year old trees to harvest?
Um, a, a simple, simple, um, approach to thinking about it might be that i- i- if you take a, our current, uh, age class distribution, let's say we have a, you know, um, let's say, so you figure out what the, the, the number of age classes you need to get to 150 years. In this case, it's 15 age classes. Um, I'm trying to describe this, bear with me. The, uh, if you look at the, your current age class distribution, uh, so you have, uh, in your 70 to 80 year age class, if you look at it, you, you have a, a surplus of acres, right? So that we're allowing the model to then, um, figure out how best to harvest that surplus of acres, um, su- such that at some future time, you have an even number of acres in each age class bin. So if you have, um, not going to use specific numbers, I guess, but, uh, if you know that you need to harvest, you know, a thousand acres per year in order to balance out the age class distribution, um, the model will then pick and choose from, from each of those existing surpluses.
Oh, see again, though, that is, that's that fully regulated requirement. So, but if you were to harvest 10 years from now, an 80 year old stand, that's premised on the idea that you wouldn't get to a fully regulated forest at 150 year rotation for 160 years, uh, uh, at a minimum. Like that's, uh, that is a long-term objective. Uh, but what you're saying is that you will harvest those surpluses in those age classes to get there. Now that will be interesting. I, yeah, it may not be what the public expects when they hear 150 year rotation, right? They may think you're only harvesting 150 year old trees.
Yeah, I, I, Ben, I could just jump in there quick, briefly. Um, yes, Heath, uh, this is Brenda McCombe for the record. I, I, there are two things going on here. One is the time it takes to get to that balanced age class. And, um, the shorter it is, the more aggressively you will harvest those surplus acres. The other, um, is that you will have some stands, very few over 150 years of age, and what do you do with those? And, uh, if you want that balanced age class distribution, then you would harvest some or all of those. And those are things that I think just need to be made very clear. The other point I'd make is there's nothing particularly magic about 150 years, other than that it sets an outer boundary as a, as a point of discussion. Uh, and, but that could be, you know, you could use your 120 or some other age class that gets you to, um, a condition like, uh, you see here in the, in the image. Um, Joe, it's up to you now.
Um, question, um, so scenario two, um, I'm assuming as, as you said, you'll use thinning as a tool by which to, um, mod or distribute these age classes. I'm assuming the economics within thinning is different. Lower stumpage value, higher, higher logging costs, et cetera. I just want to make sure that that's, that that's true.
Yeah, that's fair. Within our, within the model, we have, uh, prices that are, um, variable based on the, the, the conditions of the stand and the prescription. So.
So there's, okay, all right. Okay. Thanks. I assume that was, but just want to clarify that.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Ben, I thought I saw your hand up.
Um, Ben, I'm leaning for the record. I'll, I'll reserve, I have a lot of comments on this and some suggestions, but I would like to reserve that till the, till we are done with the presentation and come back to, to this, if that's okay. I'm assuming we'll have time to talk about this some more after the presentation.
Okay. All right, Todd, go ahead.
Okay, um, I think we can move on to the next slide. So scenario three, as we discussed, is, is about maximizing that um, cumulative volume, I guess is the better, better term here, but maximizing volume over the, the, the duration of the modeling term. And the, the assumption is, is that the model would eventually harvest stands at or near culmination of, uh, what's called culmination of mean annual increment. It's the, the, the theoretical limit to biological growth. Excuse me. And so recognizing that we, again, we have this current unbalanced age class distribution, some of those stands are beyond culmination, some are before culmination. Um, it, it will take some time and some, um, um, some finesse, I guess, to some, some variability to, to actually achieve that maximum, uh, volume. And so, um, letting the model in the, in the, the run A scenario, um, letting the model, um, run un- inter- run with an unlimited periodic variation and then, um, optionally, um, see what, um, what the, the effect of a 10% constraint on that variation would, would be. And so this is, uh, as we discussed, this is kind of an alternative to the, the status quo to, to see what the, uh, uh, options would look like there. Good, Brendan?
Thanks, Todd. Just a, a, a quick clarification. Uh, CMAI is not, um, maximizing biological growth. It is maximizing the rate at which earth is accrued. Uh, if you want to maximize the growth, the total biomass, it would be when net primary production is zero.
Thanks for that clarification. And then, uh, finally, scenario four, um, is what we're calling the, the maximize, uh, maximize net present value. So this is, um, looking to, to see what the, um, what the maximum possible, um, present value discounted, uh, present value, uh, return would be potential, uh, potentially from the, from the forest, right? So this is, uh, using a, a 4% discount rate, uh, discounting all future cash flows, um, and harvesting in such a way that, uh, maximizes the, the, the sum of those future cash flows, discounted cash flows. And so, um, it will propose setting this up with, uh, without a minimum harvest age. So letting the, uh, letting the model figure out what the, uh, what the financially optimal uh, harvest timing is for each stand, um. And then, and then again, in that first, uh, run, um, not limiting it in terms of the, the periodic variation. So the assumption is that the model would, would harvest, uh, a lot upfront and then over time would, would settle in on a, uh, um, what would be more of a, a financially optimal rotation. And then, um, the alternative runs for this would, would look at the effect of constraining that, that periodic variation by 10 or 30% per period. Questions? I didn't see.
Joe, Joe?
Uh, yeah, Joe, just for the record, um, so it's been described to me that, um, this scenario for a, an unlimited, basically in that present value run, because of the existing constraints related to Forest Practices regulations and the other constraints related to the HCP would limit this run. And so consequently, uh, having a run that sets some, sets some boundaries on like a 10% variation limit wasn't needed. Um, I, 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 I guess I, I'd like, I, my question is, do you still believe that to be true? It's hard for me. Uh, this is really where, um, when the counties talked about their potential runs, how we potential trade offs and how do, how do we evaluate a net present value run? And I think i- it's somewhat, I, 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 we do need to run an unconstrained run to get a bookend. But do you still believe that we're going to, the output of that bookend will, will be constrained such that it will be close to a 10% variation limit? That, that's kind of what I've heard from you. Have you learned anything now? Um, I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm suspicious of that. And so, um, I guess just as a, the, to test the model, uh, with this MPV run, it's, I'm, I'm thinking we're going to have to limit that in some regard or some 10%, 30% limit to really see the cost of that and see what's going on. So I, I know I've said a lot, I know, um, it just, you still think that unlimited periodic run will be constrained enough that it, it'll be something, uh, that there isn't a reason to run a constrained run and then get net present value?
Yeah, thanks for that. I'll try to describe that. Um, so the, uh, the, so we've, we've been able to explore this one a little bit, um, and so recognized early on that the, the, um, as Joe described, the, uh, the forest practices, green up, um, uh, requirements in, in addition to the, uh, the HCP, uh, draft HCP, um, spotted owl dispersal requirement are, are constraining the, th- this run in terms of the, the, the max, um, maximum net present value. So initially, um, so I, I do think the, at least the 10% run will be meaningful. The 30% is a little bit, um, questionable whether or not it's meaningful, right? So the, the model, um, the model, because of those two background constraints is, is limited in the rate at which it can, can, can harvest. And so the, uh, the 10% run may not be, uh, as meaningful, but the 10% is at this point. Uh, I think when we originally discussed it, maybe it, uh, we were looking at a, uh, an annual variation. And so, so a 10% annual variation would be, um, akin to the unlimited scenario. But if we, if we're looking at a 10% periodic variation, then there, then, then it is meaningful.
So Todd, what you're, what I'm hearing you say is you believe we do need to run that 10% periodic variation limit run in addition to the unconstrained to really understand that. That's a little different, that, that's a little different from what I heard, whatever, a week ago or two weeks ago.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the difference is, um, in the, the periodic versus the annual variation.
Right, right. It was always my understanding we'd run a periodic, but, but, um, yeah, I, I think we, I, I'm, I'm glad you said that. I, I think we do need to run that 10% variation limit on that net, net present value run to really understand, um, that cost. Um, yeah. So, okay, thanks, Todd.
Yeah, for the record, uh, this is, this is Michaelson. Um, yeah, that's, and we have a little bit more looking to do at that. And, you know, essentially, I think any of these end up in the same place. Once we chew through the, uh, you know, quote unquote, wall of wood, right? Um, it's about the steepness of the slope getting there and just, just how long it takes. So we will be like Todd said, we've been looking at it preliminarily and, uh, we should know more soon.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Uh, Heath.
Hey, for people listening, I just wanted to make sure that they understood. I mean, in terms of contextualizing this option and make sure I understand correctly. I mean, we talked about maximizing next present value, but that's only maximizing that present value after implementation of all of the requirements of the HCP and all of the requirements of the Forest Practices Act and our management under the FMP. And so, you know, like you said, you know, we've got some really big governors built in there, like dispersal habitat for northern spotted owl outside of the HCAs. Um, as you say, the greenup requirements are still there. And then we still have stay ahead provisions where we have to observe, you know, certain habitat levels and we can't be, have a declining, you know, environment there. Those are really powerful and we are accounting for all of those. And we're saying we're going to neck maximize net present value after observing all of that. Um, and so, you know, I think, I think my, my hope is that the numbers will show, I mean, this is more modest than maybe people think it is, but I'm with you, Joe. What is interesting to me is like, with a five year variation, are you, are you going to calculate that as the average for those five years? Like five years is pretty long. You could have, that could be kind of spiky. Uh, are you going to calculate an average for that five years? And then the projected average for the next five years?
Y- yes, that's, that's the effectively the way it works. It's the, yeah, the average volume for, for a period compared to the average volume for the, the next period.
So I only mean to say that a 10% variation over effectively 10 years is a really, is a very tight collar.
Five, five years, right? Five years.
Well, but I'm saying you've got a certain level for five years, and then it can only vary by 10% for the next five years. And to me, that's implying the average difference over 10 years is only 10%. I think that works that way.
Yeah, the, the average between those two, yeah, those two.
But that's, that strikes me as a pretty tight collar, but fine. And I do think it contextualizes the, you know, analysis and you know, I, 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 an agreement with you, Joe, that I think it would be an, an interesting number, um, uh, but we'll, we'll see. I think we need to understand that number in the context of the aggressive governors that are already built into this through the HCP.
Yeah, and it very well may be Heath, that those aggressive governors on this, this net present value scenario result in a flow that you kind of go, huh? Okay, you know, that, that the variation of that flow isn't that severe. The assumption within maximum necessary present value is that front lows volume heavily, right?
Right.
It may not do that because of these governors that, that exist. Yeah, yeah. If it does that in such a way that's unpalatable, you have to govern a net present value run to some degree, right?
Agreed. And, and we're doing this, and I keep forgetting, I am Heath Curtis. Uh, I should also say that this is my work computer. I had like Heath Curtis comment Hampton lumber earlier. I am, of course, here on behalf of the Board of Forestry and not my employer. I apologize. The, uh, but I, I, I do want to like highlight this model run, like the 150 year run that you described earlier, Brenda, this is like, this is only contextualizing the decision making. This isn't like we're voting, this isn't even an option. This is only a, a tool to inform our conversation down the road.
Great. Thank you, Heath. And, um, thanks for the, the discussion has been great. This has been excellent. Uh, but I do want to recognize the time and ensure that, uh, the staff has sufficient time to get through their presentation. So what I would ask is if you have a clarifying question as we go along, uh, please ask it. Uh, but if it's something that involves some greater discussion, maybe we can hold that till a little bit later. So Todd, go ahead.
Right. Thank you. Todd Heron, um, so we can move to the next slide, I think. But one more important slide here. Um, so given all of those scenarios, we'll, we'll run those through the model and, um, and, um, generate outputs, right? So the model's capable of, uh, generating a, a nu- copious amount of outputs in different forms. And so, uh, we want to make sure that we bring the, forward the, the outputs that are, uh, most informative for the discussion. These are not performance measures per, per se. These are, um, evaluation criteria that will be, um, inform the discussion hopefully. And so this will include, you know, some of the more standard ones, harvest volume, harvest acres by stand age and, uh, harvest method, thinning versus clear cut, um, inside and outside HCAs and, uh, and also the, the restoration treatments that we have, um, embedded. Um, in addition, your revenue numbers for counties, uh, as, as well as, uh, uh, yeah, the net present value, um, forest condition can, can mean a lot of things. So this is, uh, age class distributions, um, habitat conditions, um, uh, let's see. As, to name a couple, anyway, uh, reporting out on the, the HCP commitments. So the stay ahead provisions, the, the dispersal requirements and some of the other, uh, components there, as well as, uh, carbon storage and flux in both in forest and, uh, harvested wood products, uh, estimates. And so, and then separately, we were working with a, uh, uh, economics firm to, to um, produce a socio economic report. And that will include, um, some more details on the direct and indirect economic benefits of timber harvest and non timber, uh, forest uses, as well as more details on the government revenues and then, uh, impacts to things such as, uh, recreation use. And with that, I think I'll, um, hand it back to. hand it back to Mike to talk about the recommendation and next steps.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Again, Mike Wilson. So we have a recommendation here in front of you, just teed up so that this would be you approving that we go through and definitely do the green ones and also perhaps do the ones in gray. So how you want to how you want to frame that up? You know, whether you I think there's broad agreement from what I'm hearing around the table that the ones in green are good to go. But if there's, you know, if there is one run B or C that you feel like you definitely want one run, we can put that into the green category or kind of leave it up to our discretion and checking in as we go along to determine if those are needed.
Excuse me, Mike. Ben has a comment and then Bob. Ben, go ahead.
So I I'm not, Brenda, I'm going to defer to you. This is Ben, so I'm going for the record. I'm going to defer to you on process. I have a what I think might end up being a motion to make a change to scenario two, a couple suggestions that I'd like to see change there. If this would be the time to put that forward, I'd be happy to, but I don't want to shortchange the process.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Well, since we haven't voted on any of this yet, I think we well, I think we should have a discussion around any proposed changes. So Ben, maybe maybe if you could tell us what you have in mind. And then we'll listen to Bob and and then take it from there.
Thank you. In the interest of, you know, I I was one of the sort of champions of this 150 scenario two. And then as I've as I have continued to think on this and its utility and usefulness in the conversation and adding a bookends. There's a couple of changes I think would I think make it more relevant and more useful, which would be to basically switch it to 120 years. 150 years is to my mind seems fairly arbitrary. 120 years seems a little more accessible, a little easier to model probably and would be and to my mind suffice to answer the question that I I think we're trying to answer with scenario two. So my proposal would be to switch it to 120 years. And then in the question of sort of the timeframe, I think it's important that we provide some sort of clarity on how long this would take to get to that condition. And I'd like to see the model get there in 70 years, which I think to Heath's question earlier is going to mean less harvest upfronts, but we'll do a better job of answering the question of what the forest will look like as we as we get there. So that was my proposal. Happy to engage conversation about that. But to switch to 120 years and get to age class regulation in 70 years.
Yeah, thanks, Ben, for that clarification. And I agree with you on both counts. Bob?
Thank you, Vice Chair McCombe. For the record, Bob Van Dyke. I shared with the board memo in advance about a couple of topics and I asked Alani to put that in the record so it should become part of the meeting materials for those who don't have it. I'm well, first the question, how long is it? What difference will it make to add some of these model runs? To the extent it's, you know, pretty straightforward, like you change a parameter and you run the model again overnight, then I would like to see the maximized volume with the 10% periodic variation. But to the extent it's actually a more complicated matter that will slow that you getting the materials to me, to us, then, you know, that's that's helpful for me to know. I just I'll just add something else briefly. And Mike, you and I have to discuss this. I just want to clarify for the record. I'm interested in seeing how 90 plus year old stands are treated and for them to be considered as part of the climate change plan that calls out identification of areas in the state forest planning process. So so I for me, it will be helpful to see the treatment of those stands to get idea like what what kind of cost or impact it would take. And to be clear, I'm just talking about an initial 10 year period here. See, withhold them for the first 10 years. So thanks, Mike. One's just on reporting the data and then the others on time it would take to to vary some of these models. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Heath, go ahead.
I just I wanted to offer Heath Curtis. My I wanted to offer that Bob to your to your memo, I I had intended to offer this during opening comments, which we didn't have, but I I I left yesterday morning at 4:00 AM. I was in meetings until 10:30 last night in Olympia and I got five hours of sleep and I arrived here five minutes before this call started. We received the public comments yesterday and we received Bob's memo yesterday and it was just a request to ODF and an apology to the public. I've not had a moment to read your comments. When they come into the General Board of Forestry address, they're screened. Well, I guess they're gathered, they're collected by ODF before they forward them to us. And I I've not had a minute to see it. And I haven't had an opportunity to review Bob's memo either. But I was wondering before I go on, Mike, were you going to respond to Bob's comment about like how long these take? I think it really does inform what we ask you to do. It does seem to me that the difference between, for instance, scenario four A and scenario four C is probably just you know, changing your function and letting the computer run for a couple of days. But I it would be helpful to me to understand the cost associated with running more alternatives. If the cost is not great, to be honest, I'd like to see all of these.
I'll actually turn that over to Todd. He has much better awareness on the time it takes to not only do the runs, but then assimilate aggregate all the reporting.
Thanks, Mike. This is Todd Heron. Yeah, I think I think that's it. It's the it's the reporting and review aspect. We to some degree, setting up the models to the to the extent that some of these are kind of new processes that that we're trying to model like the the eight the age classes as a new new model, if you will, some of the some of the rules associated with the other runs are are new. So it takes a little bit of time to set each one of those up. But then you're right with it. Once that's once that's in place, it is generally a matter of just adjusting the parameters or the the goals associated with that 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 rule and then rerunning it. And so the the secondary piece is evaluating the outputs, just determining whether or not it did in fact meet the intent of the 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 constraint or the the objective and then and then reporting those. You know, gathering up the the information for the reports so that the intent of setting these these gray gray cells aside as as options was really just recognizing that some of that other stuff takes additional time. And if and if we're if we wind up getting crunched for time in the in the lead up, because we have to get material ready prior to the board and we have to get material ready for the socioeconomic report. So just recognizing that there there may come a point where we're just crunched for time in terms of getting those reports and other components generated.
Thank you, Todd. Just a point of clarification for you, Heath. I'm sorry that you didn't get enough sleep. But but some of this information that came in, including Bob's memo, was was yesterday. They have that, right?
I was I was committed all day yesterday. And so I like I had one day to review it all.
Right, right. So I'm just saying that some of it was was came in very late, so it's difficult to
Oh, I see.
Nothing nothing that OF could have done about expediting things.
Yes, I understand.
Liz, please.
Okay. Hi, thanks, Brenda. Lizak Power. So I I the a previous slide showed what you'll report out and one was socioeconomic piece. And I don't know if that's going to be a narrative or what kind of combination it's going to be. But are y'all thinking that you will consider any information pre HCP? Or will it be all assuming that the HCP and those impacts? How are you going to consider that, I guess? And how will that be presented? Or have you do you know yet?
Yeah, Mike Wilson, for the record, yeah, we will be the HCP and the constraints there, the conservation actions and the constraints are part of all of these models.
So everybody, I want to jump in here and just talk about process and make sure, Mike, that we're understanding what we're doing today and what we're not. My understanding is that we were really trying to have a discussion and give feedback as a board and some direction on this. And then we would formalize that with a vote in the next meeting. Is that am I got that right? Mike?
Yes, actually, I was hoping we would formalize that to David, a vote on select saying that these are the model runs that we definitely want staff to run. Maybe there's some additional discretion as well, but definitely getting to what we want them to run with us to run with any modifiers that we're having thrown out also in the mix. For instance, if you elected to go with 120 years for the long rotation, as Ben was suggesting, if if that's broad agreement, then we can we can flip these here. We can make that the agreement. Yeah, but I did want to have that decision.
What I'm kind of guessing, what I'm hearing here is that we might be able to agree on a motion that would switch that one number two to the 120. And that we would the the motion would agree that everything in green we want and we actually would like the others if time allows. The the other, I guess there's three different possibilities. And so I'd like to hear if that generally makes sense and I and what other comments there might be. And then we can maybe request a motion and and all that.
Yeah, I thanks, Jim. What I expected was that we would vote today. And so I I think that we need to follow through on that with your proposal of someone making a motion which would incorporate the proposed changes. But before we do that, we have questions from Heath, Joe and Liz. So Heath, go ahead.
Yeah. So one, I just wanted to test this with folks. And I, again, I probably shouldn't get sideways with the counties, but I I really wonder, given time, whether, again, all of these are for just contextualizing our decisions. And I I I question whether scenario one run B is doing much work for us. That is to say, you know, I I think you could land a decision at the end. I have no idea what our decision at the end. I still am confused about what that decision is, but that looks a lot like 195 that's informed by 205, right? That is to say, I don't I don't I don't know how important that is. And by the same token, I think scenario four B is not critical to me, at least. And so, but I did want to offer Ben and Brenda regarding scenario two. Again, to the degree that we are just contextualizing our final analysis and decisions, is it not appropriate to have 150 years there? I mean, we're not the objective is not necessarily to find the most reasonable things to model. The objective is to kind of frame up our decision making processes there. And I wondered if it might I fear if you use 120 years, it may start looking a lot like some of these others. And maybe that's worth knowing in itself. But I I just wanted to test that before we made a motion.
Yeah, thank you, Heath. From my standpoint, 150 or 120, they're both pretty similar from a stand structure standpoint. So I I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other as I view it from a stand and structure and composition standpoint. Joe?
Yeah, Joe, just for the record, I on scenario two, I I don't know that it matters content, you know, to get an understanding of what that looks like. I don't know that that's really going to matter. So I, you know, whether you go 150 years or 120 years, I I don't know that. I think we will get the information we need out of that run, frankly, no matter what we do. You know, Heath offering, you know, counties runs A, B, and C. I would just, and I don't want to speak for Todd, my suspicion is those kinds of runs will be relatively easy and easy to report on. You know, I I guess I would I would ask Todd. Am I correct? In in the sense that you're forcing the model to harvest a certain volume each year over every period? And 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 I'm guessing that is truly just that's not going to be difficult to make that run and report on that run. I'm guessing. I don't want to speak for you, Todd, but I I think that's true. And then back to to what Jim talked about, the the scenarios in gray. He offered, you know, if time allows, I would simply offer that potentially we if if the green runs are ran and we have information and we need probably need a touch point here that we need further runs to help inform us that a priority is made to make those runs, I guess. I would just offer that instead of just saying if time allows that we have a touch point that says hey, you know, staff is going to identify that, yeah, we probably need to run this other run to get more information.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I have a couple of points, but Liz, go ahead and then I'll I'll make mine.
All right. Thanks, Brenda. Lizak Power for the record. In a similar vein to Joe, on just as time allows, I think we had some good healthy discussion about the 10% on four and perhaps on three. So I would just say I'm kind of a little nervous about as time allows and to go back to what we're trying to do is really set some informed bookends to help us make a well informed decision. Thanks, Brenda.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. Ben, before you, could I just make a couple of comments? So first of all, I think run scenario one run A, B, and D, A, B, and C requested by the counties. I think we need to honor our partners in the counties and make sure that those are run. I'd hate to see us make decisions that would go against their wishes. The other point is, yes, we may make, we should have a motion that would identify what we want to have the agency do. But we also, I think, need to come to agreement on the need for a step in the timeline, which allows us to do a check in and ask for any further iterations that might be necessary. Ben, please.
Thank you, Ben Dominique, for the record. Just to follow up on Heath's question about the scenario two. I'm not opposed to 150 years. I I guess maybe I should frame it better and just to flip like Jim said, flip the two. I would like to prioritize the 120. I think that to me feels more useful. And I think it is enough of a departure from the one, three and four to be useful. If there's time to do a 120 and a 150, great. I think the model's ability to start making guesses about how to manage up to 108, 150 gets a little challenging is my understanding. And I'm not sure how 120 just seems more accessible. So I'm fine with both, but I would like to prioritize the 120.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Yes, I I detected a fair bit of discomfort on the part of Mike's team in going out to rotation ages that they haven't been managing. And by having it be 120 versus 150, it does it does force the issue of what to do with these stands where there isn't a surplus of acres. And and so it would be, I think, informative to see how those how how the the volume that would come from this approach of balancing the age classes would play out with that 120 year rotation. Bob, please.
Thank you for the record, Bob Van Dyke. I'm fine with 120 instead of 150, if that's what Ben and others prefer. So, you know, for me, just anticipating a motion from someone, switching the gray and green there would be fine to me. One thought is that some of the gray runs. I guess I just say that it may be that a more limited analysis could be presented from those runs. I'm just thinking about all the indicators that they're going to have to do analysis for. So and and sum up and present. So it may be, you know, we want that for the green ones. But the gray ones, they could do something more limited, like just, you know, the timber harvest results or the variation in age classes that result, etc., without necessarily doing a socioeconomic elements and and those other pieces. So anyway, elements and, and those other uh, pieces. So anyway, that's just a thought, not a proposal, but um, I, I guess looking at it, it, I think it might be fine to make sure that some of the model runs, the green ones are more robust, but some of the others they're uh, run but with a more limited amount of analytical data provided. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Bob, and I share your concern about staff time with all of these model runs. So I think, I think we need to be careful. Uh, Heath?
I actually think Bob's idea is really compelling. I, I just, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't want to make a motion, uh, without us kind of, I mean, I guess we could talk about it post-motion, but imagine, imagine that sounded like, uh, an instruction to the agency to, you know, model and complete the analysis they have described to us as to the green boxes with one twenty swapped for one fifty. And then to complete at least preliminary analysis for all of the gray boxes but for four B. And it would be a more limited analysis and scope as, as Bob described, mostly focusing on kind of harvest volumes and maybe final stand condition.
So, process-wise, um, guys here, you know, we're under twenty minutes. I know Bob has some things he wants to bring up and maybe others do. Um, and I am not, you know, I, I'm not hearing a lot of deep conflict on any of this. Um, so I do, uh, do want to, to um, kind of push us to be able to uh, uh, finish this conversation and get to a motion.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Uh, we have a hand from Joe and Ben, but I would like to see someone propose a motion sometime soon. Joe?
Yeah, I, I'll go ahead and propose a motion. Um, I would move to adopt all scenario one, A, B and C. Uh, scenario two, um, use the hundred and twenty years and in lieu of the one fifty years, swap that. Scenario three, um, uh, run A and scenario four, run A. I would also like to propose in that motion that we do run, um, the thirty percent variation limit on run C with limited reporting, um, uh, uh, as, as Heath had suggested. I'm not sure that's a clear motion.
I was just thinking about how, who's going to record this one?
I'll try to restate it if it's, uh, gets a second.
Second.
Okay, um, so, uh, Joe has made a motion and Heath has seconded a motion, and that is that we do, uh, adopt, uh, and direct the department to, uh, run, uh, all of the um, different scenarios listed in green with the change, uh, on scenario two uh, to use one hundred and twenty years instead of one hundred and fifty years. And, uh, with, uh, on scenario four, to also run the thirty percent periodic variation limit. Uh, and if we can, uh, limit, uh, the scope of that, uh, we would prefer that. Um, I believe, uh, have I accurately described, uh, the motion, Joe?
Yeah, very good, Mr. Chair.
In that case, um, we, uh, we have a motion, uh, that's been seconded. It's on the floor and I would like to do a roll call.
Discussion on the motion, please.
Yeah, and maybe it's a friendly amendment. Joe, I would just like to add three B, the ten percent periodic variation in gray to that same limited results, um, approach that I think you're suggesting for four C.
And, and I am fine with that. I'm fine to modify my motion to include, uh, scenario three B. Um, with limited reporting, um, related to that run.
Thank you. In that case, I'd just like to say I support the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this, this motion?
Uh, uh, do I need to re, uh, try to restate that? We are now including, uh, the scenario three, uh, 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 run B. Everybody comfortable with what we're voting on?
I see no hands up, Jim, so I think we're good to go.
Okay, and, uh, uh, with the, um, at that point, we will vote on the motion, uh, as stated. Liz Akpawa?
Um, aye.
Heath Curtis?
Aye.
Ben Doimling?
Aye.
Joe Justice?
Aye.
Brenda McComb?
Aye.
Bob Van Dyke?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Uh, and with that, the motion passes. Um, want to just congratulate all of you on what I thought was just an excellent, uh, conversation. Um, and, um, uh, it, it's, it's really wonderful to see all of you bring all of your expertise, uh, to this, uh, to this conversation. And, um, with that, I want to open it up to uh, uh, any, uh, other issues in board comments.
I've got, I've got my hand up, uh, Jim. Um, I did, I did want to, I did want to remark very quickly. Uh, I, I made the comment earlier about trying to get public comments to the degree we have received them earlier, um, so that we can have a little time to review them in advance of the meeting. That would be helpful to me and to other board members who may be distributing information. I appreciate it is not always possible, and I will likely be guilty of late distribution of thoughts as well at some point, but I just wanted to encourage that, that some schedules are more difficult than others. Uh, the other comment I wanted to make very quickly, Jim, uh, is uh, I keep getting outreach from vendors who are highly exercised about not getting paid and, uh, following the fire season and the state of the agency's finances. I know that ODF is doing what you can, that you are trying to lever every option that you have to try and close that gap. I, and please forgive the comment, I think that in the past, you know, board members who maybe have preceded me have been pretty animated about the agency's cavalier approach to, you know, more modest impacts to their finances associated, maybe particularly with state harvest. And I appreciate that harvest revenues don't go immediately to pay for fire suppression, but I do think that the Forest Development Fund has given the agency some options in terms of cash flow in the past, and I appreciate also that you've respected that fund and not rated it willy-nilly, but I do think that you know, every little bit counts. And in the context of a hundred million dollar liability in a huge fire season, the delta and state forest harvest would not have come close to making that up, but I, I just wanted to highlight that cash flow and preserving cash flow is a product of a million small decisions. And at our company, we focus on those million small decisions and we don't take any of them lightly. Uh, I suspect that's true of all of the companies and employers on the call. And so I, uh, I just wanted to encourage, Joe, do you have to keep that in mind and to be very serious in circumstances where revenues or cash coming into the agency may be declining due to their decisions?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Heath. I, I agree. And, and, um, you know, just for the record, uh, uh, you know, I have, uh, uh, I, I'm so unhappy with what is happening and what is happening to our vendors. I have personally reached out, uh, and talked to the governor to try to, um, make sure she understands the implications um, for our vendors and for, for how that can cripple the agency, uh, in, in future years. And, um, and we have not been able to get what we need, um, uh, uh, from uh, those who should be, uh, helping us out right now. And it, and it's a, it's a really a, a tragic situation. Um, the other thing I just want to say, uh, for the record, yeah, we got the information from Bob yesterday. Some of that other testimony uh, did arrive not long ago, but like a week ago or so. So, um, we, we've had some of that for a bit. Um, uh, and so, um, anyhow, uh, go ahead, others?
Um, I've got, I've got my hand up.
Yeah, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, first, uh, I want to say I've also heard some concern from a former board member about the, uh, payment of vendors and the cash flow issue. So thanks for bringing that up, uh, Heath, and thank you, Chair Kelly, for, for reaching out to the governor about it. It's obviously a serious matter for people in the private sector for cash flow and get paid on time. Um, I apologize for sending the memo late to you all yesterday. So those of you who didn't get to read it, uh, apologies for that. Um, I think the, the point, I made some of the points earlier, uh, regarding state forests there. Uh, the main thing I wanted to raise, and this, this relates to, um, the January agenda. And I suggested two items I'd like to see added to the January agenda. One, I think, would be a pretty brief item, and that is that we're, um, due to, um, review the state forester, I think, in the spring. And DAS, I think, is the first time going to be conducting that. So I'd be interested in learning about what that process is. So I suggested an item being the presentation by DAS of what the process will be. And then the board, chance for board discussion. My understanding is the board could add to that or, or do something else, but for me, not knowing what the process is to start with, or, you know, having a presentation would be helpful. Uh, the second item is for the board to talk more about the climate change and carbon plan, the implementation of that plan. We got some information on that at the, um, retreat. I've heard a lot from stakeholders who are interested in really knowing more about where that is headed. And I'm not sure where it's headed. I think it'd be good for the board to talk about that, maybe revisit some of the ambitions in it. Because I don't think we serve the public well to say we're going, we have ambitions, but then we're not clear how we're implementing them or if we're reaching them. So that was the purpose of the memo. Uh, and, you know, I, my understanding is any two members can request an agenda item to be added to the board. So I don't mean for there to be a, a motion now or something. I assume people could, uh, discuss that if they like. Or, you know, talk separately to the chair about whether it was a good idea to add those, those items. Uh, and again, apologies for the lateness. And I appreciate, uh, Chair Kelly the chance to, uh, to speak to those here late in the meeting.
You betcha, Bob. Thank you. I, I, I do want to thank you, you know, just recently in the last two weeks as I've been working with Cal and Alani on the agenda for January, we realized we, we had some time, which is, um, uh, rare. So I had asked Alani to reach out to board members, uh, again, uh, uh, with any requests for things, um, uh, that they would like to see added to the board. And so I'm glad you did, Bob. Um, I, you know, personally, uh, since we have the time, and I think the last conversation was shortchanged. I agree with you, Bob. I, I'd like to see, um, uh, something on the agenda, uh, relative to the climate plan. Um, on the other item, y- you know, I, I, I don't have any problem. I don't understand, I, I haven't been hearing other board members confusion around or a, a need for a presentation by DAS. Uh, we did get the memo that explains the DAS process, uh, around the state forester review. Um, Bob, you're not going to be part of it, uh, since you'll be coming off the board. So I would, you know, if there's two other board members who are interested in that, um, uh, then let me know. Um, and happy to put something on the agenda. I'm, I'm just not, you know, seeing it myself, the need for it, but I'm, I'm, there's, I, there's, I don't feel like there's anything to hide there. So I'm happy to, to have that. Um, but, uh, so I'll, I'll, uh, want to be hearing from other board members on that particular topic.
Thank you, Chair Kelly. I'll just say briefly, I have heard from stakeholders who are interested in how the process is going to work. So, uh, so that's important, the reason I asked for it. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. I'm interested in hearing from other board members if, if they're interested in that. So that's, uh,
Jim, I have my hand up, but she can't see that. So, um, so just a quick comment, I, I, I agree that there needs to be greater accountability uh, in terms of how the climate change and carbon plan is being implemented in each div- division. I also think there needs to be greater accountability on how the vision document is being implemented in each division. And I think there needs to be accountability regarding, um, my repeated requests for understanding how the agency is diversifying their workforce. Um, so there are a couple of accountability things that I would like to see come to the fore over the next, uh, maybe the next year, uh, and have those be regular annual reports to the board, just so that we can stay informed. Thanks. Uh, Heath?
I'm just, I'm just one board member, not two, Jim, but I, I would, I actually find Bob's request compelling about the process for Cal's review and learning about how that's going to work. Um, and, you know, I was trying to crosswalk the job description with kind of how that process works in it. It's new to me. I haven't been through this yet. And so I, I would genuinely appreciate the opportunity to see how it's going to go down and whether or not as a board, we have thoughts on modifications or supplementation of that. I, I think that's fair.
Okay.
Uh, Liz? You're muted, Liz.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, um, so Brenda just brought up a number of things that, um, would be important for her to hear, and I wonder how we grab that and incorporate it because I know a lot of us would like to, um, you know, to offer up some things. So whatever process that is, um, it would be good for all of us to share because we don't want to lose some of that important stuff. And then I would, uh, be a second to um, what Bob and Heath had said about having a presentation would be help, helpful and informative to me as well. Thank you, Liz Akpawa.
Heath, your hand is still up. Are you, um, is that a legacy hand? All right. Any other comments? Okay, Heath has his hand back and I don't see any more hands up. So Jim, any further comments?
Okay, uh, yeah, I, you know, we'll see how much time we have. We, we can, we can certainly ask the ass to do a presentation and, and um, I'll, I'll work with, uh, uh, Cal and Alani to do that. We'll also, um, I try to fit in, um, a presentation on, um, climate plan. I think, you know, um, and I know that, uh, Brenda, you're, you're in, you know, planning to introduce a motion. Am I right about that, uh, relative to the DEI reporting?
Possibly.
Possibly, okay. And, you know, um, you're, you're, you're absolutely not wrong about some of the other reporting that should be annual. I think, you know, we've had, and as I've been on the board, you know, find out about these various things that are supposed to be, we're supposed to be reported on every year, every five years, and so many of those things just disappear, um, and, uh, and nobody even knows about them anymore. So, uh, I, I'm certainly supportive of a conversation where we try to, um, uh, put together some, some formal requests, um, but I, you know, and then make damn sure that they get into the calendar and, uh, and, and don't disappear into the ether. Um, it uh, that makes complete sense to me.
Thanks, Jim. Liz has her hand up.
Yeah, and I thought, a thought on that, Jim, Liz Akpawa, sorry, um, would be, you know, Alani, you know, would be a wonderful person to sort of grab those things and including the landscape resiliency plan that we have going. So just, I want to offer that.
Okay, um, any other comments, uh, questions? And we, we've got a little bit of clarity about the, uh, additions to our, our next, uh, uh, January meetings, um, which is going to take place on January eighth and ninth.
Jim, uh, you just had a whole bunch of hands come up. So, um, Mike, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody for the discussion today and thank you for the clarity in, in direction on that, uh, on, on what we're doing going forward. And just want to say on the check-in piece, uh, we will keep an eye on the modeling timeline and we'll find a time there in the interim to come back to you and, um, you know, show you how things, how things are going for, uh, additional discussion.
Thanks, Mike. Bob?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, second Brenda's comments. It's, uh, true, for those of you don't know, that I will be, uh, not, uh, seeking reappointment to the board. But I have heard from stakeholders and I know for me during my short time on the board, it would have been helpful to have or would be helpful to have an annual calendar. And they've got one they use for the Forest Practice Board in Washington State, which basically rolls ahead every meeting. So you can see what's, what's on the years ahead. And, you know, we have lots of things we're required to do periodically, and so those would be easy to add, they're required by statute. Or there may be a specific project that's got a due date, but other things like, uh, Brenda mentioned, it may be we want to annual report on a certain topic, a certain time. And so being able to look ahead and know that would be helpful to me. I'll share the Washington State example with everybody so they can see that.
We've been, we've been very much working on that, Bob. Um, and, and, you know, I shared, totally shared. We've been, we've been very much working on that, Bob. Um, and and, you know, I share, totally share the need uh for it. And um, I'm. Anyhow, I, and I, and there's something out there. Alani can probably share what we do have already, um, uh, that perhaps you haven't seen.
Uh, one more hand up, Jim. Go ahead, Heath.
I just wanted to thank you, uh, Chair Kelly, uh, you distributed a draft agenda and solicited feedback and. Thoughts on what we might like to see and you have hosted this conversation here today. I really like that and I like to have some idea and kind of prepare myself. You know, uh, intellectually and even emotionally for what's to come. So uh, that's uh really helpful to me. I hope that's uh. I hope that's a precedent we can observe in the future.
Thanks, Heath. I just want to say thank you to all of you for the rich discussion today. I thought that was great and I'm glad to see that we were unanimous in our conclusions. So, yes. Jim, go ahead.
Oh, with that, I certainly agree with that. And um, uh, so I want to thank all of you and I want to thank staff. Uh, in particular for um all the work that they're putting into this and will be putting into this. This is a. This is a lot of work. Um, and I really look forward to um. Uh, being informed by all that work uh down the road. So with that, um. Uh, again, we're going to be meeting again on January eighth and ninth in Salem and look forward to seeing all of you in person next year. And with that, we are adjourned.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Thanks, all.
Hi.